The basement and we'll have the Roberts conference room next to HR available. And then the police chief has just offered his conference room in his area that we can utilize as well. We don't know how long they'll be here, somewhere from 60 to 90 days. Once the bid is awarded, we'll send out the contractor to establish a start date and then we can figure out how to get them moved, when they have to be moved and go through the removal of all of their items of furniture that either they won't need or that they're going to retain and bring with them or that they're going to store in the basement of the finance building. So that's sort of a short synopsis of it.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Did you even look at a note for that? Did you rattle all that off from memory?
We've been working on this long enough that it grained in my, yeah.
Awesome, thank you. Anything else for the committee of the whole? All right, well, we will adjourn and reconvene at 7:00 PM for our regular meeting.
I've never been in your conference room.
I bet you have.
Well, I've been there, but it wasn't a conference room.
It's a table and six chairs. Yeah. Yeah, that's really all that's in there. Need to get some pictures, but we'll let the next person worry about that.
I gotta get an invite to the HR. Debbie's somewhere, I don't know where she's at here on the second floor, but...
Yeah, she, the same door where you'd go back to Matt's office, if you go down that door, she's the same door.
Oh, is she? Okay.
Yep, just, you'll go to the left side for her and Matt, you would go over towards the right.
Okay.
Yeah, she's got a very nice area too.
That's where the city prosecutor used to be, I don't know if you ever were there.
Nope, nope, nope.
Ken's good, he's not in trouble.
She's gonna appreciate you letting him know how to find her.
Tell him Dale's...
I wasn't gonna say it.
Dale's gonna be a schematic. Dale, you didn't, Dale, you didn't mention this area here, is this off limits or...
This is going to stay as is. Might have some meetings in here when council doesn't need it.
Okay, that's what I guess I was thinking. Okay, yep.
I'll be a little further.
Don't have a...
Probably try to keep, we try to keep this used to a minimum, simply for wear and tear.
It's the one, or a boat. Can't think of any, Myrtle Beach.
Okay.
That's the other town, I can't think of the other town, but we're in between there.
Gotcha.
Usually we stay at my son's, but we decided to go to the ocean.
Oh, nice.
So. So we're taking a grand tour, yes, we're taking my sister. He's not there with his kids, so it should be nice.
Yeah.
A total of five days. You're not going with the whole group again, are you? Oh, geez.
Oh, yeah. Be my last meeting with you.
At least out here.
Out here, yeah.
Spreading, decluttering, took everything.
Yeah.
Cause I have this ridiculous amount of books and...
Is this the same place you went last year?
I do this stuff, cause I'm on those four...
I think I was invited to the 26 grand parties. And I always put what order, what resolution. Well, what I do, yeah, that's what I do, I go into the library and I just go down to my basement and just pick up three. And I, you know, I think about the kid, like, oh yeah, this kid was really nice. Oh, here's an old Marilyn Monroe book.
Try to do this, one thing, get out there with a raisin. There can be all people who suit it.
I'm adding the word.
Nowadays, I'm getting right here, 53.
I was talking earlier, we're just gonna party.
Shut up, really? Okay. It's the fifth? Okay. Recommended plan a little bit, that's, that's fine. If you can, it's up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that would be different. So they just went without you.
He's got quite this, what are you up to, council member?
Oh, no, nothing. We're gonna be gone.
We're both gonna be on vacation.
Hopefully going on vacation?
Not together.
Together?
I'll be going...
We could follow him partway. But we're going further.
When next week?
Two weeks.
Do I forget?
Are you out? Two, two weeks?
I'm not.
Just assume you are every other week.
You got any sun up there yet, man? Often, yeah, my boys won't go inside. Mine was terrible.
Places were available because nobody wanted him right after.
Who caught that little typo here on that order?
I'm so loving it, you guys are tough to talk about.
Who would find too calm other than...
You know, I should've caught it myself when we went.
It's shining.
It was my assistant, he's like, I know. I then went through it, I was keyed in on the dollar, it was a fun number, I missed one minute, so.
That's the only problem, you have all day or all week, it's still a good day, yep.
Yeah, I guess, you know.
Okay, it is 7:00 PM, I'd like to call the Tiffin City Council meeting of June 20th to order. The invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Perkins.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Lord, for all your civil servants, thank you for their hard work and sacrifice, may you continually bless them, may you generously give to each of them wise and discerning hearts to skillfully govern the people of our city. Give the mayor, city leaders, staff, and city council wisdom so they may solve problems, distinguish between right and wrong, and bring order, stability, and prosperity to our community. Amen.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Thank you, Councilmember Perkins. I will now ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
Councilmember Perry?
Here.
Councilmember Gillig?
Here.
Councilmember Yanatuno?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Leopard?
Present.
Thank you.
Let the record show that six of the six council members are present.
Minutes, minutes from June 6th, regular and committee of the whole meetings were distributed. Are there any corrections, additions, deletions, comments?
Comment wise, it was very well done, I reviewed it today. Thank you.
Awesome. Right. Seeing no corrections or deletions, the minutes will stand approved as presented. We are now under committee reports, Finance Committee, Councilmember Gillig.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Long community planning, Councilmember Leopard.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Materials and equipment, Councilmember Jones.
No report at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Personnel and labor relations, Councilmember Perry.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Recreation and public property, does anyone from this committee have a report?
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Street sidewalks and sewers, Councilmember Perkins.
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. And economic development and downtown planning, Councilmember Yanatuno.
No report, Miss, Madam President.
Thank you. Committee of the whole, does anyone see the need to have a committee of the whole meeting? Okay, seeing none, we are now under reports of the officers, for the last time, his, his honor, Mayor Aaron Demonts.
Thank you, Madam President. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I do have two proclamations that we're due to read, one of which, I appreciate the law director bailing, bailing us out last night and reading at a ceremony, but we also feel that it's, it's, it's good to read it here this evening. And it's a mayoral proclamation stating, whereas our nation was conceived on July 4th, 1776, with the Declaration of Independence, the classic statement being, we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas on January 1st, 1863, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, paving the way for the passage of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas this news reached Galveston Bay, Texas, when General Gordon Granger arrived on June 19th, 1865, and announced, the people of Texas are informed that in accordance with a proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free. Whereas on June 19th, 18, 1964, the United States Senate ended a 83-day filibuster on the Civil Rights Bill of 1964, leading to President Lyndon Johnson's signature of the landmark legislation. And whereas June 19th has a special meaning to black Americans, and is called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th, and has been a day to celebrate the successes gained through education and greater opportunity by the black community for more than 150 years. And whereas on a larger scale, celebration of Juneteenth reminds each, each one of us the precious promises of freedom, equality, and the opportunity which are at the core of the American dream. And whereas Juneteenth has been declared a national holiday and will be celebrated locally from 4:30 to 6:30 P, or 4:30 to 6:00 PM on Sunday, June 19th, which was yesterday, on the East Green in downtown Tiffin. Therefore, be it resolved, I, Aaron Demonts, Mayor of the City of Tiffin, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2022, in the City of Tiffin as Juneteenth. This was done on the 19th day of June in the year of our Lord, 2022. You know, that, that statement, I don't know about, you know, any of you if you've ever actually read it, but until you read it out loud, I, I don't know if it did it for you, Brent, last night, but when you read the quote from General Granger, I feel like it can't help but make your hair kind of stand up and give you goosebumps, knowing that, that those individuals who nearly two years, or excuse me, nearly a year after the, the war had ended, still had not heard about the Emancipation Proclamation. And, and for them to actually be hearing that coming from this general's mouth, it really kind of, it hits you as you say it. And that was the first time I actually uttered it, you know, we've seen it in writing, we've read it, but when you actually utter the words, it, it, it really is, is something. So, so that was the first, and then we do have a second proclamation, and I know we've got some folks in the audience here for this one this evening. Excuse me. It's a mayoral proclamation stating, whereas amateur radio operators are celebrating more than a century of the miracle of the human voice broadcast over the airwaves. And whereas amateur radio has continued to provide a bridge between people, societies, and countries by creating friendships and the sharing of ideas. And whereas amateur radio operators have also provided countless hours of community services, both in emergencies and to other local organizations throughout these decades. And whereas these amateur radio services are provided wholly uncompensated. Whereas the state also recognizes the services of amateur radio operators also provide to our many emergency response organizations, including but not limited to the Seneca County EMA, FEMA, the American Red Cross, the Salvation Army, healthcare facilities, hospitals, and extended care, CERT, the National Weather Service, Skywarn, and others. Whereas these same individuals have further demonstrated their value in a public assistance by providing free radio communications for local parades, bike-a-thons, walk-a-thons, fairs, and other charitable public events. And whereas the City of Tiffin also recognizes and appreciates the diligence of these hams who also serve as weather spotters in the Skywarn program of the National Weather Service. And whereas the American Radio Relay League, ARRL, is the National Association for Amateur Radio. And whereas the ARRL Amateur Radio Field Day Exercise will take place June 25th through 26th of 2022, and is a 24-hour emergency preparedness exercise and demonstration of the amateurs, of the radio amateur skills and readiness to provide self-supporting communications without further infrastructure being required. Therefore, be it resolved, I, Aaron Demonts, Mayor of the City of Tiffin, do hereby proclaim June 19th through the 25th, 2022, in the City of Tiffin as Amateur Radio Week. This was done on the 20th day of June in the year of our Lord, 2022. I know we have Mike and a few others in the crowd this evening. Mike, if, if you would like to come up, we will snag a quick photo, and if you would like to talk just for a little bit about some of the things that are occurring at the amateur radio event, I think it'd be great for the public, I hear you're gonna try to blast something off the moon.
That would be a first. I don't know.
Well, you can't do it. One of the things we're going to do this weekend, we're going to bounce a signal off of the ISS, the International Space Station.
Okay, there's something in space.
Now, now that signal, we're gonna send it up from, what is it, which park is it? Meadow Brook Park. Okay? It's gonna hit that space station, it's gonna come down somewhere else in the country, and someone else will then broadcast another signal, that person who hears that, back to us, making a complete contact. So, that thing's gonna go up about five miles into space, back down on the other side of the country, possibly Hawaii, depends, Alaska, who knows, Idaho, wherever. But someone's going to hear that, and they know, they will know that that's coming from Tiffin, Ohio. So, I have to tell you, this town, this county, this, it's been, it's been a huge honor, working with you, your office, whether it's with the Seneca Radio Club, Buffalo Wild Wings, I don't care what it is. We were in a position a couple, about a year and a half ago, where we had to sell one of the two restaurants. We sold the one in Finley, and we sold the right one. I'm just gonna tell you that, okay? Because this one, this one is amazing, and the people that live in this town, and work in this town, and support not only the Seneca Radio, but we've got like almost 50 members, active members at this point. Just, it's a wonderful group, and everyone in this room should be very proud of this town, and your office was instrumental in getting B-Dubs here. And I can't thank you enough for that proclamation, so thank you so much for that.
You're very welcome. Here, let's get a quick photo for Nick, I'll let you all...
Let's do it. Nice.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do, I know you're constantly helping out with a lot of our volunteer events.
Well, one thing about it, when communications are down, ham radio will always be up. If the cell phone towers go down, we'll hook to a battery and we'll have radio contact, so. And that happened where they had the hurricane.
Hurricane Marion.
Yeah, Marion, yeah, you had there, so. Well, thank you. Great, thanks.
Yeah, was there, I'm sure there would have been a lot of ham radio operations during the blizzard of 78, do you remember doing anything with that, or?
I wasn't into it then.
Wasn't into it then?
I don't know if Mike was.
I was, I was staying being exceptionally stupid. Uncle Ward's playing in that house, okay? So, I can't say that, but I can say this, during the deratio in Marion, the sheriff's, the sheriff's office down there lost total communication, all of its deputies, couldn't do a thing. They grabbed the ham radio operators, and those guys made sure that those communications were, were still happening. The other thing we can do, just a quick thing, everybody thinks when the internet, you know, the internet's such a great thing, well, when it goes down, we can still send email, we can do that all day, okay? So, the communicative capabilities are endless, we bounce signals off the moon, we bounce them off satellites, we bounce them off the clouds, some of them are cloud warmers, they go up and they come straight back down. But, but it's, it's just a great science, a great hobby, and it's, it's as inexpensive as, as expensive as you wanna make it, but it's, it's a lot of fun. And anyone that gets into it, gets addicted to it very quickly, right over here, okay?
Right there.
There you go. So, just a thought, if anybody's interested, we're gonna be out in the park this weekend, playing, doing it, making it happen, and we're gonna eat great, we got some, we got a guy smoking a bunch of, you know, just good stuff. So, we always have fun, it's always...
Smoking good stuff?
We still talking about meat, or?
And we have developed a small version of the flux capacitor to, to power up this weekend's event. So, if you wanna see something really cool, come out and check that thing out, it, plutonium and all.
Jones?
Thank you. Do you have a time picked out when that ping is gonna go up to the shuttle?
We're looking for several passes, and the passes are about, if it's directly overhead, it's, it's exactly eight minutes that it goes from horizon to horizon. If it's off to the left or the right or whatever, it, the chances of bouncing are, are less likely, but if that fails, we've got a satellite, it's called AO-92, is the name of that satellite, we're gonna use that as an alternate, and that satellite is a geostationary satellite, so we'll be able to bounce off that. But, the idea is to pick up the space station. All, almost all of the astronauts aboard are ham radio operators. And so, we don't know the time yet, but if I get you that information on when those passes are gonna be, all right? So, it's crazy stuff.
Yes.
And you don't require Morse code to be a ham radio operator any longer?
No.
When did that discontinue?
None of us would be here.
When did that end, roughly?
Sorry?
When did that end, that change? Cause my dad was a ham radio operator.
In the 70s, I think that went away, maybe 70s, that, that went away. So, the tests are, I mean, there's three tests, and some of them are get, get a little mathematical, a little crazy, but it's, it's a, it's a great, it's just good stuff to know, and we have a lot of fun with it, we have some crazy stuff going on, so, thank you for listening, and thank you for your interest.
I just, I just wanna say, we got involved in it when the sheriff's office, their tower went down, they had no radio communication with their deputies. And the sheriff at that time, he said, we need to learn this stuff, so, he started in it, and he goes, well, the wives need to learn it too, so we got in it. We are starting to get more women into the club.
Yeah, cool. Lot of fun, right, Dean? Can be expensive, too.
But thank you.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for everything that you do, thank you. Okay, just a couple of other very quick items, I just wanna welcome, I know she's not able to be here this evening because she's finished up her vacation from, that was planned from last year, but welcome Vicki to city council. Vicki Wilkins will be joining us, I believe, on July the 5th, the next council meeting, as she was appointed by the local Republican Central Committee. Quick financial update for everyone, I sent out the numbers this morning, we're about 15 and a half percent year-to-date, ahead of where we were last year, which is about 880,000. So, we're in a very solid financial position headed into, into the fall, which it's hard to believe, we've already been discussing with department heads, working on budgets, but it will be here before you know it. It never fails, 4th of July hits, and it seems like in absolutely no time, budgets are being worked on and submitted, and meetings are being scheduled, and they're all well aware of that, and, and starting to work on those numbers. Two things that I, I wanted to try to get accomplished, and I think we're to the point that, that we can share with council before I depart, was to try to wrap up a few open-ended contracts that we had with the city, the first of which, we've reached a tentative agreement to extend the contract with Rumpke Trash Services at a, at a minor cost increase, which I consider very minor, when you look at the costs that we're seeing with inflation of anything else, whether it's your gas bill, your electric bill, water bill, et cetera. So, we will be bringing that to council in the very near future, probably through the city administrator, but we did sit down and hammer out what, what we believe to be in agreement, as long as the numbers come back to what they submitted to us, so we'll all have that for you, and then you can all consider how long you would like to extend that, if you just wanna do the two option years, or if you'd like to do another five-year agreement. My recommendation is always to extend it as long as you can, because it's a nightmare when, when it ends, if it switches from one company to another. And then the other, I am pleased to announce, we have reached an agreement already with one of our labor unions for this fall. We were due to negotiate all four of our labor unions, we do have an agreement already that has been voted on by the union, and they have approved it unanimously. So, I would ask that at some point, whether it's during my committee report or later, that you go into executive session, we can share the deal, details of all of that with you, but I think it will set up the future administration and a good negotiating point from the city as well. So, pleased to announce those two items. A couple of events coming up, Eric Sowers is playing this Thursday night at the East Green as part of our TNT Thursday Night Tunes. Just, those have been a big hit, there are a bunch of, of local to semi-local bands, Bryce Coon and Mason Correll at the Parks Department put those on with sponsorship dollars, and, and just a great evening to see families milling around, especially with all the heat that we've had, they're out there watching. The first concert was last week with Soul Pilot, and, and just seeing people out there listening to the concerts and enjoying it, as the kids are playing at the splash pad, it's always a good time. Then this coming Saturday, Kristen Merlin, who is country pop, is playing at the East Green. She was actually one of the finalists on The Voice, one of the big TV shows, which I actually don't watch, so I can't say much about, but I do know Blake Shelton, I believe, is one of the judges on it, so I do, I think I've got that much right. But she is one of the, she is the performer this coming Saturday night, so she's expected to draw quite a large crowd. And then there is also a farmer's market, of course, because every Saturday now there are farmer's markets, and then also the summer stroll is this Saturday, so, it's kinda hard, I think, anymore to say there's nothing to do in Tiffin, because it, it's getting harder and harder to condense what we wanna share with you that's going on anymore, there's so many, and there's ribbon cuttings coming up this week, but I think that's expected, because the day ends in Y, but it's just... My last meeting, I finally get Jones to clap for me, I love that. Took me to my last meeting, I got Jones to clap for me, wow, I can just leave right now. Mission accomplished, thank you, Ken, you just made my night.
Man a hand, yes.
But with that said, it...
Oh, Lord.
It has been a pleasure working with all of you here in city government, and I'm excited to just continue, as I, as I stated in my announcement, I'm just excited that I've been able to find something that allows me to remain in Tiffin for this foreseeable future, continue to work with all of you in city government, the department heads. Tiffin is truly, it, we really are the best small community around, and, and I was just meeting earlier this evening with our new superintendent, who just literally is spending his first few days in Tiffin, and, and when he asked me what my vision of Tiffin is and what our marketing is, and I told him, I said, we try to tell people that we are the best smaller city around, and he said, you know, he goes, that's what I've told my, my wife and kids, is, that's the same way that he has viewed Tiffin. He said, what amenities does Tiffin not have that you get elsewhere? And other than the things that you're never going to see in Tiffin, Ohio, like a professional sports team, or, or Cedar Point, or, or a massive water park, what don't we have? And, and they're just thrilled to be moving here to Tiffin, to take part in the community, and, and I really think that's what we are. I think you're hard pressed to find another city of anywhere near our size that have the things that we have, whether they're events, whether it's amenities, two universities, a very good school system, both public and private. This is an amazing community, and, and I'm hoping to remain here for the rest of my life, and look forward to continuing to work with all of you, with our residents, with our businesses, and to expand that across Seneca County. So, thank you, thank you, thank you all for the time that we've gotten to spend together, and will be spending together in the future.
No, I think I speak for everybody that, everything that you've just described, that's, a lot of that is very much due to your leadership in, in the city, so, thank you for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
No, I think that's, that's good, unless I get Jones to clap for me one more time. Thank you, but probably executive session, either now or later, it will take five minutes at the most.
Would someone like to make a motion to go into executive session, Councilman Gillig?
Thank you, Madam President, I would so move that we adjourn to executive session to discuss the details of the city negotiation with the labor union.
Thank you, there's a motion to go into executive session to discuss the labor negotiations, is there a second? Yes, Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I'll second, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second, do we take a vote on this? Okay, any discussion? Okay, well, oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Do we need to clarify who goes in if, if, or will it just be council members?
It's my understanding it would be council members plus the city administrator and the law director.
Council can invite anyone that they, they wish into executive session, so...
I think it would be appropriate to invite the city administrator and...
Well, absolutely. Is that already a given, or should we make that motion?
If you want to add that to your motion so that it's clear who you invite, that's fine.
Madam President, may I amend my motion to include invitation to the law director and city administrator, please?
Sure.
May I come too?
No.
Last meeting.
Okay, bye.
I was just, I was under the impression that we were gonna devolve into a 90 minutes of Ken and I asking questions of the amateur radio operators.
Well, if that's the case, I'm fine staying here.
So, there, let me get this right, so there's a motion to go into executive session to discuss labor relations, contract negotiations, while inviting the city administrator, the mayor, as well as the law director, is that correct?
Yes, please, Madam.
Thank you, is there a second? Yes, Councilwoman Yanatuno.
Second, the amended suggestion.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk can call the roll, please.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno? Yanatuna.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Leopard.
Yes.
Okay, we will adjourn to go into executive session at this time.
I'm sorry?
I didn't know any of this either.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Ben didn't invite you though.
Stretch my legs sometime.
Of course, of course.
He's a handsome man.
Well, what I told her, he's called Sam, he's four digits, he's, he's a bigger man.
We gotta check, we gotta start in October.
I don't, I don't.
I know, but I hear, I hear.
Yeah.
She never, she never, it's just not her thing.
Oh, for real?
No, it's just not her thing. If she knew what I spent on my, you know, you know what I said, I don't, you know what the pervert would be done with a police report?
Yeah.
Don't let my wife sell my guns for what I said I paid for them. Same thing with my lawyer. She sees this stuff on the floor in the basement, and it's in a, you know, it's in a class of people, and she doesn't think anything of it. If she knew that I spent like three-hundred dollars for a wall of cable, she'd be like, "Are you kidding me?"
What did she spend on?
You know, she's, actually, she's pretty full, but she, she likes shoes, she likes shoes. And then she makes her money, too. I, I do not support her, she worked for her throughout her career. In fact, when I was in Austin, we were both, we were both peasants, and I remember coming home, like, a little over, and I bought this new book, and she's like, "You said what?" She was all worried that I was violating some law, because I had student loan money on it.
Rouse is a whore.
Absolutely. We didn't even have some to put it on. Honestly, that's a true story. She, she is afraid of, and I rather said, because we're driving, on interstate, and there's those big cars up there, I mean, that's all I thought.
The biggest funny guy I know.
But I told her, they've got, you can put them in one, that you can't even see.
I think I was asking about the patio.
Council, how are you?
That's it.
Hello, folks, I didn't see you when I came in. How are you?
I was just thinking of the patio. I was going to go to a tree and that, and the.
Yeah.
I don't have a towel, towels.
I'll tell you, whole, I didn't, whole, like, two-hand radio, when I was a kid, I mean, seven-year-old, my next one, he was an electrician, and he was a hand, and he had, I told him, "Oh, God," and then he went in a direction, he.
Yeah, me, yeah, we were there.
Well, she's got this great electricity, but he, my dad was dying, and so he spent a good part of my, my, so we're forty-five years in there, with this, and he would have a whole, he had a, he graduated Drake, that wasn't people, you had Drake, you were all out, and you were.
Yeah, those are good careers.
All, all the original stuff, and still, it's, it's, how many, how to solder, and how many, and passive industries, and all that stuff. How many college, and I was, I was, I was, I had so much more luck because of his self-employment I was, so I don't know, it's all because of him.
I shouldn't have talked to anyone, said he was building around town.
Oh, yeah, he did, until this, until this big one.
You think it never worked, but it does.
First Pittsburgh got a storm, he lost his ear, he said, "Had a, you know, he lost his ear in the end of study," and then came down, it was not good, it was a collection of recycled metal. Doesn't do a few, then you all, which change to.
Yeah.
He's an engineer.
What Eric, what I said.
He's got all the great stuff.
Yeah.
He's got all the great stuff.
Yeah, sure.
He's got all the great stuff.
Oh, okay.
Vicki can do it.
Yeah.
She gets all the, all the work in the house.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She was, I had it on.
Yeah.
She was like, "I have it on me very clean." I put it so, I had it, I'm sure, I'm sure.
She wanted to have a nice, long conversation.
Sure.
Dean, what moment could you?
I'd probably go to stuff, I'd see you guys, just, we'll talk about.
Yeah, do that.
Doing something, doing something, like, we're all the way through the house, you'll see.
Yeah.
Cause she'll be there, devil, better watch out.
Well, she, she knows a lot of guys, and install, she, she.
And like, like.
That's probably why she doesn't want you to walk.
Well, she, she like, she like, she like, she like.
No, I, please, those guys are classy, they're classy.
They are, so. Well, I, you know, when I got into the P I O, we had two major fires, just down in this, in this county, and they installed, it's called, it's called, we got a little bit of, you might want to, what's this dance they say, "Brother, what are you doing right now? Grab your stuff and go."
Remember that?
I remember, I remember, I remember, I remember, I remember, I remember, I remember.
He wore five with one C three.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Set it ready?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah. That's the treasure, and I hope the book, yeah, but I trust that, so, I mean, she's done well.
So keep it rolling.
It's got more, right now, probably.
Yeah.
Some of the, the years, other classes, we have a class, we have ten more, we have ten more.
That's pretty serious.
Yeah, I figured.
I don't think it powers a channel, that wasn't good.
All right, Shannon.
You might get on the ears, man.
I'll tell you what, what I'm gonna, if I, if I have time to get out there, it's not all, of course, I got a clue, it's worth a power, but if I get out there, I'll bring my force, I have a, is it a force thing?
Yeah. Got a bunch of a scat.
Probably, she have two meters or four fours.
I guess, two meter, four fours.
That's seventy-one hundred, it's a piece of wood.
Yeah, yes, it is.
That thing is one of the most highly regarded portable sounders, really, on the market.
Really?
If you go in the, you know, and everything is on that.
Yeah.
You know, I thought that, I thought that we called it, hey, again?
Yes, a couple of years ago, and then somebody told me, "You better check," and this is terrible, he said, "You better check and make sure that's in your package," which at once, okay, it's, it's right, but I'm like, "Oh, God." Yeah, but it's, it might basically help for three or four years.
There's one upgrade, you can do that radio, just a different microphone, maybe, that's a lot.
Okay, really?
And then you give the icon, I think it's called one fifty-six.
That's great.
I'd have to look to be sure, because I was reading about that radio this morning.
Yeah.
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 Well, you know, it was new at the time, I got it, it's eight hundred.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's some, maybe you should check it out.
And so, I asked a couple of people, I asked them about Mike, I asked them, I asked, who's the guy that was, it's on, Jeff.
Oh, Jeff.
Jeff.
Oh, yeah.
He's sharp. Yeah, he is.
He's got the radios ringing, but I.
Those guys are special.
Oh, yeah. I mean, he can rattle stuff off.
When I was down to go do W M, I was a radio engineer, I had a, I had an engineer, he's got, Jerry Cartney, who, he was, like, one of the original radio, he was playing the radio since he was a kid, Christmas sets. We had a guy, I can't remember his name, on the fifth floor, and he, he was, like, a new work, a whole thing, and he and Jerry used to argue about, and listen to white movies, and transmit, and other, and other, and other, and they would argue about whether that was scientific, or receiver, or, you know, or some other, you know, motorola, and I'm like, all I heard was, you know, and then they turned it up and down, "Now, listen, listen for the pulse," and like, there you go, pulse there, guys, you know, it was hilarious.
Well, you, you need to see our question, you need to see.
Danny, and I can say, why don't you go first?
Oh, I pushed him down.
It's, it's.
Good to know.
They look alike, don't they?
Yeah.
Have any contact information from Vicki Wilkins that you can pass on to me?
Yeah.
You have like a phone number or a mail?
But she's overseas right now.
Okay, I just wanted to get with her.
Yeah, cause I'm getting her a lot. There, I don't have a case to help, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got that.
Cause I just wanted to alert her that she needs to get with Mary and Paul.
Let us begin.
That's the number and the email for her.
Okay, thank you.
I think you move first and then, right? And then I.
Yeah, just ask for a motion to come in.
Yes, you, Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Madam President. I would so move that we return from executive session and resume our regularly-scheduled council meeting.
Thank you. There's a motion to adjourn executive session and resume our regularly-scheduled council meeting, is there a second? Councilman Perkins.
I'd like to sit the second, thank you, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion?
No.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Councilmember Perry.
Yes.
Gillig.
Yes.
Yanatuna.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
And Leopard.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We will resume our regularly-scheduled council meeting. Um, Mary, you said you had one more item.
Yeah, just one last item. It's been a little bit of a rough week, the last week or so in the fire department, you probably have seen that we lost, retired chief Huss had passed away, and then we also, unfortunately, just this morning, Sean Tyler, who was a firefighter paramedic, retired medically due to cancer, occupational cancer that he had, he passed away this morning at the, the way-too-young age of thirty-seven years old. And, and just one of those things, you know, we talk about P P E washers and other things, and, and that's why I'm so happy that this council and chief chapel are so proactive at supporting those kind of things, because there's no telling if his outcome could have been different, but we know we can help prevent those kind of things in the future, and it's just, it's awful, he's got some young kids, a wife, and it, you never know when it's your time, but it's very hard right now in that department, a couple of big losses, but especially Sean really hits close to home at that young of an age, so I would just ask if we could all bow our heads for a few moments and take a moment of silence for both of them. Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my reports, but if there are any questions, happy to answer.
Any questions for the mayor? Yes, Councilman Jones.
I have a question for the mayor, I think it was last meeting or recently, you made a comment, and your name came up this past week, and I was patting you in the back, saying I thought for the last eleven years, Mayor Montz has done a fine job leading the city, and I said one of the good things he did was grew the unencumbered budget from, I said, hopefully I got the number right, six-hundred thousand up to around five-point-two million, and someone asked me what caused that, and I guess I should have known the answer, but in layman's terms or general terms, how did we, not you, the city, the city grow that from six-hundred to?
How, how long do I have to explain it? It's been a lot, from changing, gosh, health insurance, we've made major changes to our health insurance here, to obviously fiscal responsibility, and I'm giving this to the high level, we could sit down and I can tell you a lot more. A lot of it has been also the return of, of income taxes, the fact that Tiffin continues to grow and add businesses, and we're seeing more and more manufacturing expand, as well as new, new restaurants and retail and downtown's rebirth, that has aided to it. But a lot of it, and I think Kathy can verify, she's just in my office talking about it today, was, was, how did you put it about how, you didn't call me tight, but you said something along the lines of how, how we are with our spending here.
It seems like we're very conservative budgeting.
Yeah, yeah, and, and a lot of it has just been through, yeah, yeah, conservative budgeting and making sure that, it's not easy, telling whether their departments or, or residents or others know when it comes to spending, because that's how truly you make a lot of folks happy, is, is spending money, whether it's on a new ambulance, a new fire truck, or whether it's on police vehicles, or training, or, or equipment at the parks, you, you really, when you're in the mayor's role, you want to do it all, but you also have to realize you can't do it all, or else the city will be completely out of money. And, yeah, when I took over, we actually had a hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars was the unencumbered balance, and it, it's almost five-point-two million, we'll see at the newest financial report, which you won't have this evening, I couldn't read my own note on there, Kathy, you won't have the financial report this evening, because if, if you recall, Kathy was off, she unfortunately had to have emergency surgery, so I think you'll all give her a pass for not having the financial report done this evening, so she may have two of them for you to approve at the next meeting, but, yeah, I'd be happy to sit down, I can tell you a lot more, but I don't know how I could explain all of the things that we've done over eleven years in the period of, of a couple of minutes here, but, yeah, those are some just major highlights.
But thank you, I just wanted, a few bullet points, and I jot them down, I'll get back to this individual, and, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the mayor? Yes, Councilman Perkins.
I understand that you're going up the street, but, you know, you're gonna be solely missed, a lot, by everyone, not just us here, but residents, you know, I've heard it a thousand times in a week, so best of luck, but make sure you come down and visit.
Thank you, I will. I'll probably be sitting right out there in a lot of these meetings.
Yes, Councilman Perry.
I blame Mr. Perkins for leaving town, why you left your job, but I do wanna, I mean, there's two reasons I joined council, and, and one was to honor Mark Hayes, who was a dear friend of mine, and, and a dear friend of Tom Hayes, so, and another was to work alongside, you know, Mayor Montz and his administration. Ton of respect for you, where you got us, and just, it's been an honor, so.
Thank you.
Good luck at your next gig.
Thank you.
Hopefully you'll give shorter reports than.
Ooh.
Just a little bit.
Yes, Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Madam President. The mayor and I have spent fifteen years together, we sat over there together for four of those years, and we made a friendship, and that's, that's what is important, is the friendship that we have, and I'm gonna miss you here, I mean, you are the leader that, you are a leader that the city probably has not seen in many, many years, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Yes, Councilwoman Yanatuna.
Thank you, Madam President. It's been a pleasure working with you, and I can say that I knew you when you were eighteen, and I was on school board.
For you to go up to Channel Eleven News. You did, yeah.
With Denise Cowling and our superintendent, and so I've known you a long time, and very proud of you.
Thank you.
Very proud of the product of Tiffin that you are.
Proud product of Tiffin City Schools, thank you.
Councilman Gillig.
Yeah, I would imagine this is making you wildly uncomfortable, and apologize for that, but for, for those who don't know the, the inside story, Aaron approached me and asked me to consider throwing my name in the ring for city council, even though, you know, Democrat in a primarily Republican area, and I will all.
And so I asked a couple of people, I asked about Mike, I asked Dan, I asked who's the guy that was
Oh, Jeff.
Jeff.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
He's sharp.
Yeah, he is.
Oh, he does.
He's got the radios ringing.
Yeah. Those guys are special.
Oh, yeah. I mean, he can rattle stuff off.
When I was down to go do W O N, I was a radio engineer. I had a guy in his car.
Yeah.
I had an engineer, he was a guy like Jerry Cartman, who, he was one of the original radio.
So why?
He was playing radio since he was a kid at Christmas Eve. We had a guy, I can't remember his name, on the fifth floor, and he, he was walking.
No.
And he worked for a company. And he and Jerry used to argue about, and listen to the white news, to transmit what the old boys and the other, or celebrities, and they would argue about whether that was scientific, uh, receiver, or, uh, you know, or some other, you know, motorola, hell, and I'm like, all I heard was, you know, and then they turned it up and down, oh, listen, listen for the pulse, and like, there you go, pulse there, guys, you know, it, it was hilarious.
Well, you, you need to see our close encounter, you need to see.
I thought you were Danny, and I didn't say, why don't you go first?
Oh, I pushed him down.
Yeah.
That alone, yeah.
It's.
Thought Zach was getting it.
Good to know.
Well, they, they look alike, don't they?
Yeah.
Have any contact information from Vicki Wilkins that you can pass on to me?
Yeah.
Do you have like a phone number or a mail?
But she's overseas right now.
Okay. I just wanted to get with her.
Yeah, because I'm getting her a lot. There, I don't have a case to help, but not Twitter, yeah, I've got that.
Because I just wanted to alert her that she needs to get with Mary and Paul.
Let us begin.
That's the number and the email for her.
Okay, thank you.
Three moves.
I think you move first and then, right, and then I.
Yeah, just ask for a motion to come back.
Yes, you, Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Madam President, I would so move that we return from executive session and resume our regularly scheduled council meeting.
Thank you, there's a motion to adjourn executive session and resume our regularly scheduled council meeting, is there a second, Councilman Perkins?
I'd like to sit a second, thank you, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion?
No.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yannatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, we will resume our regularly scheduled council meeting, um, Mayor, you said you had one more item?
Yeah, just one last item, um, it's been a little bit of a rough week, the last week or so in the fire department, you probably have seen that we lost, uh, retired Chief Huss had passed away, and then we also, unfortunately, just this morning, Sean Tyler, who was a firefighter paramedic, um, retired medically, uh, due to cancer, uh, occupational cancer that he had, um, he passed away this morning at the, the way too young age of thirty-seven years old, um, and, and just one of those things, you know, we talk about PPE washers and other things, and, and that's why I'm so happy that this council and Chief Chapel are so proactive at supporting those kind of things, because, um, there's no telling if his outcome could have been different, but we know we can help prevent those kind of things in the future, and it's just, it's awful, he's got some young kids, a wife, and it, it, you never know when it's your time, but it's very hard right now in that department, a couple of big losses, um, but especially Sean really hits close to home at that young of an age, so I would just ask if we could all bow our heads for a few moments and take a moment of silence for both of them. Thank you, Madam President, that concludes my reports, but if there are any questions, happy to answer.
Any questions for the mayor? Yes, Councilman Jones?
I have a question for the mayor, I think it was last meeting or recently, you made a comment, and your name came up this past week, and I was patting you in the back saying I thought for the last eleven years Mayor Montz has done a fine job leading the city, and I said one of the good things he did was grew the unencumbered budget from, I said, hopefully I got the number right, six hundred thousand up to around five point two million, and someone asked me what caused that, and I guess I should have known the answer, but in layman's terms or general terms, how did we, not you, the city, the city grow that from six hundred to?
Um, how, how long do I have to explain it? Uh, it's been a lot, uh, from changing, uh, gosh, uh, health insurance, um, we've made major changes to our health insurance here, uh, to obviously fiscal responsibility, and I'm giving this to the high level, we could sit down and I can tell you a lot more. A lot of it has been also the return of, uh, of income taxes.
Okay.
Uh, the fact that Tiffin continues to grow and add businesses, and we're seeing more and more manufacturing expand, as well as new, new restaurants and retail and downtown's rebirth, uh, that has aided to it, um, but a lot of it, and I think Kathy can verify, because she's just in my office talking about it today, was, was, how did you put it about how, you didn't call me tight, but you said something along the lines of how, how we are with our spending here.
It seems like we're, we're very conservative budgeting.
Yeah, yeah, and, and a lot of it has just been through, yeah, yeah, conservative budgeting and making sure that, it's not easy, uh, telling whether their departments or, or residents or others know when it comes to spending, because that's how truly you make a lot of folks happy, is, is spending money, whether it's on a new ambulance, a new fire truck, or whether it's on police vehicles, or training, or, or equipment at the parks, you, you really, when you're in the mayor's role, you want to do it all, uh, but you also have to realize you can't do it all, or else the city will be completely out of money, and yeah, when I took over, we actually had a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars was the unencumbered balance, and, uh, it, it's almost five point two million, um, we'll see at the newest financial report, uh, which you won't have this evening, uh, I couldn't read my own note on there, Kathy, you won't have the financial report this evening, because if, if you recall Kathy was off, she unfortunately had to have emergency surgery, um, so I think you'll all give her a pass for not having the financial report done this evening, so she may have two of them for you to approve at the next, uh, meeting, but, um, yeah, I'd be happy to sit down, I can tell you a lot more, but I don't know how I could explain all of the things that we've done, uh, over eleven years in the period of, of a couple of minutes here, but, yeah, those are some just major highlights.
But thank you, I just want a few bullet points, and I jot them down, I'll get back to this individual, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the mayor? Yes, Councilman Perkins?
I understand that you're going up the street, but, uh, you know, you're gonna be solely missed, a lot by everyone, um, not just us here, but residents, you know, I've heard it a thousand times in a week, um, so best of luck, but make sure you come down and visit.
Thank you, I will, I'll probably be sitting right out there in a lot of these meetings.
Yes, Councilman Perry?
I, I blame Mr. Perkins for leaving town, that's why you, uh, left your job, but I do wanna, I mean, there's two reasons I joined council, and, and one was to honor Mark Hayes, who, uh, was a dear friend of mine, and, and a dear friend of, uh, Tom Hayes, so, um, and another was to work alongside, um, you know, Mayor Montz and his administration. Ton of respect for you, where you got us, and, um, just, it's been an honor, so.
Thank you.
Good luck, uh, at your next gig.
Thank you.
Hopefully you'll give shorter reports than, uh.
Ooh. Just a little bit.
Yes, Councilman Leopard?
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam President, uh, the mayor and I have spent fifteen years together, we sat over there together for four of those years, and, uh, we made a friendship, and, uh, that's, that's what is important, is the friendship that we have, and, uh, I'm gonna miss you here, I mean, uh, you are the leader that, you are a leader that the city probably has not seen in many, many years, and, uh, thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you, Steve.
Yes, Councilwoman Yannatuno?
Thank you, Madam President, it's been a pleasure working with you, and I can say that I knew you when you were eighteen, and I was on the school board. For you to go up to Channel Eleven News.
You did, yeah.
With Denise Cowling and our speaker attendant, and so I've known you a long time, and very proud of you.
Thank you.
Very proud of the product of Tiffin that you are.
Proud product of Tiffin City Schools, thank you.
Councilman Gillig?
Yeah, I would imagine this is making you wildly uncomfortable, um, and apologize for that, but for, for those who don't know the, the inside story, Aaron approached me and asked me to consider throwing my name in the ring for city council, even though, you know, Democrat in a primarily Republican area, and I will also say that, you know, I sat with him for a good forty-five minutes, and we had a wonderful discussion, um, with Jim Jordan's, uh, senatorial opponent, and, you know, Aaron listened and, and learned, and, you know, everybody parted as friends, and that was the end of it, and it's, it's pretty cool to see, um, and I also, you know, forget, you're, you're not even forty years old yet, you know, what, thirty-five now, like?
Thirty-six.
I barely, you know, it's just, it's, it's incredible, and you started that when you were twenty-six, and when I was twenty-six, I was a moron, and I'm only, I'm only slightly less of one now, so that's, that's pretty impressive, Mr. Mayor, and I'm proud to know you.
Thank you, Ben, thank you, means a lot.
Just one thing real quick here, I mean, not everyone can be twenty-six, but at forty-six maturity level, and I don't mean that as an insult by any means, but it's, it's something that most people cannot do, most of us do the opposite, you know, we go through the twenties lost, don't know what we're doing, we're just running around, you know, and you were bred into being a mayor, you know, from a baby, you know, that's, it's pretty unbelievable.
Oh, and here's the global pandemic, so. Navigate that.
I'd just like to go out with exciting things, you know. Thank you all, thank you.
Anyone, anyone else have anything? Okay, uh, we will move into, uh, Clerk of Council Ian Forrest, anything from you?
No report, Madam President.
Thank you. Director of Finance Kathy Kaufman?
No report, Madam President.
How dare you, Kathy? And, uh, Director of Law Brent T. Howard?
Yes, thank you, just a couple items, um, I'll let you know that, uh, the sewer easement that you authorized to, to receive from AAI Leasing, um, was, uh, signed and recorded, you may recall that involved, um, a residential development, Runyon's Reserve up in Second Ward, um, on Davis Street, so, uh, that is in place, and hopefully then further development will, will take place in that neighborhood. The other item is ordinance twenty-two dash forty-eight, that's our annual ordinance that adopts a, a budget, twenty-two twenty-three budget, that's submitted to the County Budget Commission, and, uh, wanted to remind, um, the President of Council that we have a required hearing before adoption of that ordinance, so I would remind you to call for a public hearing regarding ordinance twenty-two dash forty-eight adopting a tax budget for twenty-two three, but have that hearing at, uh, the, um, the next council meeting.
Okay.
Which is July fifth, and it can be scheduled at the beginning of, uh, of that meeting after, um, roll call, and there is a required notice, and, uh, that has to be ten days prior, so that needs to be put in the newspaper, um, for that ordinance, so then we can then submit that to the county auditor timely in July. Any questions about that procedure? If not, that concludes my report, thank you.
Any questions for the law director? Oh, sorry, yes, Councilman Perry?
Um, I would just so move that, um, we have the law director prepare legislation to, um, uh, for the accepted contract negotiation.
Okay, um, there's a motion, uh, for the law director to prepare legislation regarding the, uh, labor contact, contract negotiations, is there a second? Councilman Leopard?
I'll second the motion, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, um, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the motion, thank you.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yannatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, the motion carries with a vote of six to zero. All right, we are now under written communications.
Thank you. Mayor's request for legislation number twenty-two dash twenty-one, appointment to Thomas Connor Memorial Commission, Cade Rowe.
Thank you, this, uh, Mayor's request for legislation number twenty-two dash twenty-one will be referred to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number twenty-two dash twenty-two, apartment, appointment to Park and Recreation Department of Danny Yannatuno.
Mayor's request for legislation number twenty-two dash twenty-two will be referred to the Personnel and Labor Relations Committee.
Mayor's request for legislation number twenty-two dash twenty-three, supplemental appropriation for the City Hall renovation.
Mayor's request for legislation number twenty-two dash twenty-three has been prepared tonight this evening, uh, as ordinance twenty-two dash fifty-seven.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F twenty-two dash twenty-one to amend the two thousand twenty-two budget ordinance twenty-one dash one oh five to appropriate funds into the fire capital budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F twenty-two dash twenty-one has been prepared for tonight as ordinance twenty-two dash fifty-five.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F twenty-two dash twenty-two to amend the two thousand twenty-two budget ordinance twenty-one dash one oh five to appropriate funds into the fire operational supplies budget.
Finance Director's request for legislation number F twenty-two dash twenty-two has been prepared this evening as ordinance twenty-two dash fifty-six.
And then finally, we have the letter from the Seneca County Republican Central Committee regarding the appointment of Victoria Wilkins to fill the position of Tiffin City Council Member at Large.
Thank you, this letter will be kept on file in the clerk's office.
And that concludes the written communications.
Thank you, we are now under oral communications, anyone wishing to address council may step to the podium, sign in, and direct their questions to the council president.
Mayor Montz, congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, I was a former resident of this city, I'm on the outside of town, I work here, I practice law here, and as you know, over the period of many years that I've known you, I personally have always found you to be responsive and receptive and open, and, uh, in this day and age, in the government, that is at least we can be able to expect, and you've always been very gracious, and I'm very appreciative of that, so.
Thank you, Dean.
I wish you well, and I hope that the person that replaces you is half as qualified and certainly is always.
Thank you.
My name is Dean Henry, uh, my business address is ninety-seven South Washington Street, Tiffin. I've come here tonight, and I'm gonna be brief, uh, to address ordinance number twenty-two dash fifty-three, I was here at the last meeting, I heard some discussion about the declaration of vacancy in the Tiffin Municipal Court Judge, now Tiffin Fostory Municipal Court Judge position, and I wanted to address that. I've been a practicing lawyer now for, it's hard to believe, thirty-one years, I tried my first case in the room that we're all in right now, uh, when this was Council Chambers and Tiffin Municipal Court all together, and it's always interesting to be here, I've been here by three judges, and, uh, I've had a great experience as a lawyer in this community, I've always considered myself blessed to be in this community. I, I'm not originally from here, I'm a transplant, and I'm a happy transplant, and, uh, they'll put me in the ground here, because this is a great community, but as a lawyer, uh, we have been through some times in the last year, and, uh, I'm not gonna get into details about personalities, I do wanna talk about the position. Right now, in, in the Tiffin Fostory Municipal Court, and this is a court that, of my thirty-one years of practice, I have practiced actively in for twenty-nine of those, I was a prosecutor in that court, I was a defense lawyer in that court, I actually served as an acting judge in that court, and I still hold that appointment, although I haven't sat on the bench in quite a while. Now, when we walk into that court, we have five good men who are, uh, taking time out of their day and, and relocating on a temporary basis, in a sense, from the communities that they, uh, previously served, to come here and help us out, and these are five good judges, uh, they all have lots of things in common, they're all good jurors, they all listen, they all care, they all try to do the right thing, the other thing that they all have in common is, they're not ours, we're borrowing them, uh, they have not been elected to this position in Tiffin Fostory Municipal Court, they are here serving us at the request of the Chief Justice of the Ohio Supreme Court, and it's a great honor to be asked to do something like that, and they carry out their obligations and their duties very well, but they're not ours. It's time for the citizens of this community to get to choose again who their municipal court judge is going to be. If you practice in this court as I have, you realize that the public's perception of what goes on in the justice system, both civil and criminal, does not come from the big court, does not come from the common police court or the appellate courts, or even the Ohio Supreme Court, the perception that the typical citizen has of what goes on and where justice is done in their community emanates from rooms just like this, from municipal courts, small community courts, where the relationship between the attorneys and the judges and the litigants can be very personal, and particularly in a community like this, as we know, everybody knows what's going on in Tiffin, right, it's that kind of a town, it's what makes us special. So tonight, I know from the second time, you have before you, uh, an opportunity, I would suggest that you, to consider declaring this office vacant, this office is vacant, it's been vacant for a while, just because we have substitute judges doesn't make them ours, and as I've said, and I wanna make it clear, I'm not casting aspersions on five people that serve, I've, I've practiced in front of all five of them, and I can all tell you that they're great people and they're great judges, but again, they're not ours, and this community deserves a judge from this community, that's what the system was intended to produce, and it's time now to make that happen, uh, we've been without a judge, an elected judge, for some time, and that's out of our hands, that is, that is a matter that rests exclusively with the Ohio Supreme Court, they made a decision, and that decision has affected us, and now, I would respectfully suggest to this council that it's time for you folks to make a decision. I understand that some of you have reservations, I particularly appreciated the dialogue, uh, that Councilman Perry and Councilman Jones had in the last meeting, and I, I truly wanna thank both of you, uh, for thinking through, in one case, changing your mind, Councilman Jones, I appreciate that, you don't see that these days, uh, a lot, but it was refreshing to see that, and Councilman Perry, your desire to pull your, your community and your word, I think those are great things, um, and I appreciate that from all of you. I would suggest to you, though, that, that what has occurred here in this community, particularly in my world, in the legal world, is unprecedented, and I, I mean that, I don't use that term often, but what has gone on in this community is well-known throughout the entire state, and unfortunately, it's not known for good reasons, um, this is a bit of a blemish on our community what has occurred here, not our fault, by the way, not in any stretch, but I would suggest that it's time to get that fixed, and one of the ways to get that fixed, and I would suggest the best way to get that fixed is for you folks to seriously consider tonight, uh, a, a firm affirmation of that ordinance, and a declaration that that position is vacant, because it is. This is not a referendum on who is sitting in that chair, this is an office, it is not a person, and when you put on a robe as a judge, and you assume the mantle of a judge, you are doing that in the public trust, you don't own the office, it is not your courtroom, that courtroom belongs to the people, the citizens, that chair that you sit in is, in some respects, a pedestal that you're put on, but it is not yours, it is a pedestal that you are allowed to stand on, because the community has said, we're gonna let you stand on that pedestal, and you get to stand on that pedestal while you're of good behavior, and in my world, the organization that decides whether you're of good behavior or not is the highest court in the state, they have made their declaration, and they get to do that, they get to judge, you don't have to judge, you don't have to judge an individual, you don't even have to judge an individual's actions, and I, I know that some of you think this might be a referendum, or this might be an opportunity for second chance, and I get that, but that's not why you're here, it's not what the law says, it's not your obligation, your obligation is to act or not, based on whether there's a true vacancy, I know some people told you, you must do this, I don't agree with that, I don't agree with that position at all, I've read that statute, I think what you can do is discretionary, but what you should do is, in my opinion, the right thing, count the months, count the absence, and essentially do your job, so that we can get on with the folks in this community getting to choose their judge, whether that's the same one that sat before or somebody different, that's the decision of the voters in the community, not yours, but whether that position's vacant or not, that's, that's pretty clear, so, without making judgment on any individual person, or what he or she has done or might do in the future, it's really a matter of counting months, and listening to the statute, and following your conscience, and doing the right thing, and doing the right thing for the community. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dean, thank you. Any questions or comments for Dean Henry? Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Good evening, uh, Madam President, Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, for those of you who don't remember me or weren't here last time, my name is Christopher Leibold, I'm attorney, and I represent Ms. Alexandria Orta, um, who's here again with us, um, I'm here on the same matter that Attorney Henry was here, and, uh, something you may not know is that I'm a member of city council in my city, and I understand that sometimes it feels like we suspend the rules too often, that maybe we should let things go a few more readings, that, you know, that's why the rule's there, maybe we should do it, but then there are times when you wanna send a message, or there's times when there's really nothing to talk about, it is what it is, and that was sort of what Attorney Henry left you with, has it been six months? Yes, all right? And so I think what you need to ask yourself is, what message are you sending? Are you, what, what, how are you portraying Tiffin to the world, uh, with your vote on this potentially tonight? And secondly, um, when I practice in this town, I normally walk frequently from the coffee shop over to the entrance to courthouse, and every time I do that, I pass a historic marker for the first two women to practice law in this state, which was in the city, that should be your legal legacy in Tiffin, you need to get back, you know, get back to that, that will send the message, that Tiffin was a place where equality, uh, freedom, um, you know, was one of the first parts in Ohio to do that, and you can get back to that by cleaning up what has been a tarnish on this great city, and we've heard a lot about how great this city's been in the last eleven years, and how it will be in the future, and that's my message to you tonight, get back on that, clean up this tarnish from your city, and move on from it, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Does anyone else wish to address council? Okay, seeing none, we are now under motions. Uh, yes, Councilman Leopard?
Uh, thank you, Madam President, I would so move to amend ordinance number twenty-two dash fifty-three to include the word judge in section two, line two, after the word court.
Okay, there's a motion to amend, uh, ordinance twenty-two dash fifty-three, is there a second? Yes, Councilwoman Yannatuno?
I'll second, Madam President.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Uh, seeing none, I will, um, call for a vote as all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, the motion carries, thank you. Are there any other motions this evening? Okay, we are now under resolutions and ordinances.
Resolution number twenty-two dash eighteen, introduced by Steve Leopard, resolution approving mayor's appointment of John Bing to serve a term on the planning commission from the effective date of this resolution until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
This is the first reading of resolution twenty-two dash eighteen, Councilman Leopard?
Uh, thank you, Madam President, I would ask for passage of resolution number twenty-two dash eighteen.
There's a motion to pass resolution twenty-two dash eighteen, is there a second? Councilman Gillig?
I'd like to second, Madam President, with our gratitude to Dr. Bing.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, I'm gonna raise your hand higher.
I'd just like to thank, uh, John Bing for his continued service to the city of Tiffin, he's, I believe John served on the park board for more than twenty-five years?
I think it was over thirty.
Over thirty years?
Long time.
And, uh, even, uh, even in his retirement, he continues to, uh, assist the city.
Thank you. Thank you. Any, yes, Councilman Gillig.
Do I recall correctly, he became involved with the Parks Department because he was playing in men's softball leagues and really enjoyed it?
That's the story he tells, I think, yeah, yeah.
That's so neat.
Yeah, I think he was one of those that put his hand up and said, somebody ought to fix this, and they said, good, you're appointed. There you go.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilman Perkins.
Yes.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Resolution 22-18 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 22-42, introduced by Zach Perkins. Ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with a professional design firm for the construction, administration, and inspection services for the 2023 urban paving project.
This is the second reading of ordinance 22-42.
Ordinance number 22-43, introduced by Zach Perkins. Ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with a professional design firm for the construction, administration, and inspection services for the SEN SR 18-0.07 East Perry Street Reconstruction Project.
This is the second reading of ordinance 22-43.
Ordinance number 22-44, introduced by Zach Perkins. Ordinance authorizing city administrator to prepare plans and specifications advertised for and receive bids and recommend and execute a contract for the SEN-SR 18-0.07 East Perry Street Reconstruction Project.
This is the second reading of ordinance 22-44.
Ordinance number 22-46, introduced by Zach Perkins. Ordinance authorizing and directing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with a professional design firm for preparation of the engineering and design and construction, administration, and inspection services for the Riverview Estates Sewer Rehabilitation Project and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 22-46.
Ordinance number 22-48, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance adopting a tax budget for fiscal year 2023 attached hereto as a part hereof and directing the director of finance to deliver the budget to the Seneca County Auditor on or before July 20th, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 22-48.
Ordinance number 22-53, introduced by Steve Leopard. Ordinance determining and declaring a vacancy in the office of judge of the Tiffin Postroya Municipal Court and declaring an emergency.
This is the second reading of ordinance 22-53, Councilman Leopard.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I would ask for suspension of amended ordinance number 22-53.
Thank you. There's a motion to suspend ordinance 22-53. Is there a second? Councilman Jones.
I'll second that motion, Madam President.
There's a motion and a second to suspend ordinance 22-53. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Perkins.
So I was not present in the last meeting, so I'd like to state my views upon this to be crystal clear. In Ohio Revised Code, it states, "A vacancy in the office of judge exists upon the death, resignation, forfeiture, removal from office, or absence from official duties for a period of six consecutive months, as determined under the section of the judge and also by the reason of the expiration of the term of an incumbent when no successor has been elected or qualified." A vacancy resulting from the absence of a judge from official duties for a period of six consecutive months shall be determined and declared by the legislative authority, whom is us. This is not a punishment, this is nothing more than reading the law as written and applying it. It's that simple to me. I think it's that simple to most, so I am 100% for moving on with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Hearing what Councilmember Perkins just talked about, the key word there was "shall." "Shall" means take action, I guess. It doesn't mean... It just means "shall," so that's the key word, thank you. Leave it at that.
Yep.
Thank you. That's helpful. Any other discussion? I'm sorry, Councilman Leopard. Really got to raise the hand higher.
I have, I have nothing more to add than what Attorneys Leibold and Henry spoke. I think, I watched every councilman when Doc, when Mr. Henry was speaking, and he had all of your attention, and I believe that you understood what he, what he stated to us as the, uh, this is the truth, it's actual. And I think we need to take action on this amended ordinance tonight, put it to rest.
Thank you. Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Madam President. The system works when there's buy-in, and I doubt, and I don't want to speak for anyone else on council, but I would have had no interest in taking part in, in a second trial or second public hearing. That's been done, that's outside of our purview. But unfortunately, this is our, this will be our time to act, I believe.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I can only speak for myself as a city council member. I cannot speak for council. I've been educated that Madam President Boyle speaks for city council. The one attorney, I didn't catch his name, starts with an L, and I get accused of not listening.
Leibold.
Leibold, thank you, sir. Understood him to say, "City council needs to send a message." I am not sending a message. I am just looking at this as yes or no. Has it been more than six months? Yes. So I'm not trying to send a message.
Understood. Thank you. Councilman Perry.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, my biggest thing, at least to get to this meeting, was I always want to fully understand what I'm voting on and be able to read the context. You know, having not gotten the ordinance, you know, when it came in the original packet, I wanted to make sure I fully read it from front to back and knew exactly what was in there, as I do with anything, you know, that is city-related. Just been doing a lot of kind of research myself on this the last few weeks, and, and the more I think about it, the more it's hard not to just take it very literally. I mean, like, just reading the statute, it says, you know, like Councilman Jones was trying to get to, I think, was, you know, the word "shall." I looked that up, and it said, you know, "cinnamons such as," like, "must," you know, and just, I think, you know, I think we could debate exactly what a vacancy is, or if we should take action or not, but it is hard to not just act on this literally, on what it says, word for word. Why the statute was written in the first place, I don't think we really have too much knowledge on why. It was written early 1900s, right? If I'm not mistaken.
You stuck a brand.
But again, it's hard just not to go back to the, to the words and take it, you know, very literally, so.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Perkins.
Yeah, final thing here, I don't think it's up to us to interpret laws. We read the law, and it's as written, and this is our duty, so we shall proceed.
If there's no further discussion, we will now vote on the suspension.
Councilman Perkins.
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the emergency.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Leopard?
Yes.
The emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. Um, we will now vote on the passage, sorry.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-53 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 22-54, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending ordinance number 2049 to correct a typographical error in the fund number for the Street Improvement Bond Fund and declaring an emergency.
This is the first reading of ordinance 22-54, Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask for suspension of our three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 22-54.
Thank you. There's a motion for suspension of ordinance 22-54. Is there a second?
I'd like to second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Gillig.
It's kind of why I, I love getting into the nuts and bolts of government, because, you know, this is kind of a minor thing, but it requires council action, it just shows the, the checks and the system's in place.
Thank you.
Pretty cool.
Any other?
That's my official statement. At large council, it's pretty cool.
With that in notes.
Yeah. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we will now vote on the suspension.
Councilman Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Emergency passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-54 passes with a vote of six to zero.
Ordinance number 22-55, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending 2022 budget ordinance 21-105 to appropriate $18,451 into the Fire Rescue Division capital budget for the purchase of workout equipment.
This is the first reading of ordinance 22-55.
Ordinance number 22-56, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending 2022 budget ordinance 21-105 to appropriate $12,500 into the Fire Rescue Division Operational Supplies Budget for repairs to the 2005 Seagrave Engine.
This is the first reading of ordinance 22-56.
And ordinance 22-57, introduced by Ben Gillig. Ordinance amending 2022 budget ordinance 21-105 to appropriate $35,668.90 into the Capital Improvement Budget for the City Hall Annex renovation.
This is the first reading of ordinance 22-57, Councilman Gillig.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to request suspension of council's three-reading rule and immediate passage of ordinance 22-57.
There's a motion to suspend ordinance 22-57. Is there a second? Councilwoman Yanatuno.
I'll second, Madam President.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I heard the number twice, I didn't write it down. Could someone repeat that specific 35K? Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, we will now vote on the suspension.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Suspension passes with a vote of six to zero. We will now vote on the passage.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yanatuno?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
ordinance 22-57 passes with a vote of six to zero.
That concludes the ordinances, Madam President.
Okay, we are now under other business. At this time, I would like to discuss the mayor's vacancy and what this process will look like for council to elect a replacement. Like many of you, the news of Mayor Montz stepping down for a new position was a shock. I'm thrilled to see what you will do at TCEP and what that will look like for you personally. But I also know as city council, we have a big job ahead of us to ensure the next person to fill that role can step up to the task. So today, I'm formally letting council know that I, while I will be accepting the acting mayor's role beginning July 5th, I will not be fulfilling the mayor's term. It is my privilege to serve on city council and the city council role as, as president, and I intend to do so after the administration appoints a new mayor. Since graduating from Tiffin University and making Tiffin my home, I knew that I wanted to be involved and do great things for this community. However, at this time, it is not the right time for me to lead the city, and I know that we as city council can find the right person to fully commit to this role. So therefore, as council, we have the responsibility to define the process of appointing a new mayor to fulfill the term. So at this time, I would like to pass it over to Brent Law Director Howard to describe, you know, what exactly that looks like from his perspective and some guidance. I also have some recommendations, but it's definitely up to council to really define and have us agree upon what that looks like so that we can notify the public.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. First, I want to thank Councilman Gillig. I'm 60 years old, and I've never been related to anything cool, and ordinance 22-54 was a typographical error by me, and that's the one that you applauded as being so cool to fix, so I'll have to do that more often, be called cool. Thank you. With the, the process to elect a, a mayor, and that's the terminology in the charter that you are, you are required to follow, the first issue that comes to mind is the process that you need to follow, and the process is not defined in any way in that section in, in Article 5. It just states that you shall elect the mayor, and this is to fill the unexpired term through this next year, so about a year and a half through the end of, of, of next year. The question comes into mind, how you should determine the process. And initially, should you go into executive session, or can you go into executive session to have a discussion, talk about the, the process, then come out of executive session to then take action? Because as you know, you can't take action of any kind in executive session. So in looking at whether you have the ability to go into executive session, setting aside whether it is a good idea or not, but initially, you have to look at Section 4.08 of the charter. And your charter says that you must comply with the Ohio Open Meeting Law. You don't have anything specific about open meetings other than what the open meeting law requires or allows. And it does allow executive session by a public body to consider the appointment of a public official. That's the language of the open meeting law. Now let's compare that to your duty in Section 5, which is to, shall elect a person to succeed to the office of mayor. So my question to myself, and I think I urge you to consider, is, is appointing a public official the same as electing a mayor? My conclusion and my advice is that it is not. Appointing an official suggests that it is a person or position that you may have some responsibility over, an employee. Oftentimes, one individual or a body may appoint an individual to perform particular functions. That, I believe, is different than electing a mayor who is ultimately elected by the voters of a community. For that reason and that distinction, I believe that you should not risk going into executive session, having some question whether you have that right under law to do so. And I believe that you shouldn't take that risk. One of the problems, if you are challenged about going into executive session and taking action in violation of the open meeting law, is that it could bring court action against you. It could invalidate, if a court would decide, invalidate some action that you may take. It may cause court costs and attorney fees to be paid, and so that can all be avoided, the legal risk, by having your discussions about the process and the vote to elect a new mayor in open session. I know that causes maybe some awkwardness, maybe some people are uncomfortable with that, but sometimes the democratic process is a little awkward and a little uncomfortable consider, too. That transparency is really important. It instills confidence in your public body, city government. They may, people may not agree with maybe everything that you have done to create the process of fairness for the election of a new mayor, but they should understand it because they have seen your comments and heard your discussions and believe that you're doing what is in the best interest. As you know, you may consider any qualified elector within the city. So that means that you may consider one of yourselves, and you might very well do that. You also may consider an external candidate, too. In fact, the charter was changed. The voters recently said that you shouldn't just consider yourselves. You should consider, you may consider yourselves, but you should consider anyone that possesses the qualifications in the city. So I think in fairness to external candidates that are interested in the position, they should understand the process entirely, hear all of your discussions, and not have you go into executive session and come out and wonder, you know, is this really a fair and open process for everyone for consideration? So with those comments as kind of a start of how you develop the process, I wanted to share that with you. I know you may have considered the possibility of going into executive session to have some least preliminary discussions, but I would advise against that and advise that you do everything in open session. Are there any questions about my comments and advice on this issue?
Councilman Perry.
Yeah, I just, I would have one question about the process. Would we be able to appoint someone and then put it on the next election so the voters can vote in the mayor for the rest of the unexpired term? Is that not a possibility?
Well, you are, first, you are electing. The language of the charter is electing, not appointing. And the person will fill the unexpired term of the mayor's current term, which is through the end of next year. So there will be an election for the mayor for the term beginning January 1st, 2024, for a four-year term. And that's that election, that nomination and election, the general election will take place next calendar year. So you are just filling this for approximately a year and a half. And the voters will decide then going forward whether the person you elected, if that person chooses to run, or anyone else that may choose to be a candidate.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. I know city council doesn't like the two words, "what if," and only because I don't know. What if we don't elect someone in the next 30 days? What happens then?
Right. First, the 30 days, I believe, based on the charter language, begins the 5th of July.
Okay.
So there's that 30-day window. But the charter is clear that if you don't act, then the presiding judge of the Complis Court of Seneca County then has 15 days to appoint a person.
Thank you.
So there is a further process if you fail to act.
Thank you.
Yay. So, yes, Councilman Jones, is it quick?
Thank you, Madam. The reason I ask that is I know someone is going to ask me that, "what if?"
Sure. No, it's a good question.
That happens, and I wanted to have a clear answer, and I didn't want to come back like I did to Mayor 600K to 5.2 MM. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Leopard.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll ask the administration, I'll ask the city administrator, I guess, and the mayor. Can we use some of the staff of the city? Like, I would like to use Deb Reamer, who is in charge of HR, to maybe give us a list of questions that may be something beyond what we could ask. Is it possible we could do that? Aaron and Dale?
City Mayor, do you want to respond?
I would like to reply to that. I think myself and those who serve as department heads feel this is a decision of council. We'd be very flattered that you would consider involving us in the process, but we have grave reservation about doing so and trying to influence this process in any way, both because it places those members in an uncomfortable situation, and they all serve at the pleasure of the mayor. So it also puts them in some jeopardy. I had a meeting with them a week ago Monday in which they were very clear that they will serve whoever council decides is the best person to serve in that role, and will do so to the best of our ability in the same way we have served Mayor Montz. But the strong preference was to not be involved in that selection process. Everybody has their own concerns about how this appointment or election will proceed. But in fairness to the process, it's best for us to abstain from that process. If you ask for qualities in the person that we think should be present, I think that's different from asking us questions about who should that person be. So I think we'd be willing to talk about qualities of an individual that we think are important because we've served, but they are biased by who we have served with already. Does that help? Respond to that, Councilman?
Yes or no?
I know.
I understand. I wouldn't want the director of HR to essentially sit in and ask the questions that are pertinent for a mayor. But I would like for her to maybe supply us with some questions. I'm not asking that she be here. I value Deb Reamer's. I just, you know, I have a tremendous amount of respect for what she does.
As I think all of us do, but again, we don't want to influence this process, which is squarely something that the charter says is a responsibility of the council.
Thank you.
Councilman Gillig.
Yet again, that's been one of the most fascinating aspects of all this and something I've spent a lot of time with is my initial gut reaction as a social studies teacher was, well, it simply has to be an elected official because they've already received the mandate of the people, but that's not specifically what the charter says anymore. And, you know, it's probably incumbent upon us to see who's interested and who's available.
Yeah, you can, and then I'd like to get into it.
Yeah, that's fine. One thing, I think it's more important probably to start off with a timeline.
Yeah.
Like when and how.
Correct.
Is probably a little easier than, you know, who we're going to involve because it's a very short time span here.
Correct. Yeah. So one of the things I want to, you know, stress on and harp on is time is obviously not on our side with this. And I strongly urge that we ensure that we make this decision within the 30 days that is allowed, starting July 5th. Therefore, as much as, you know, we can do ahead of July 5th as far as deadlines of applications, reviewing those applications, and then setting up a date to allow those applicants to come and interview in this public forum, I think is really necessary to ensure that we define that now because we have a little bit of lead time. But 30 days is not a lot of time to fill the role of the mayor. So that's what I really want to harp on and kind of make sure that that is agreed upon and aligned here before we leave this evening. I do have some recommendations upon looking at the calendar and, again, with the short time that we do have. However, I think first what I would like to, you know, discuss as far as the deadline for applicants to submit their resumes and cover letters, and is that what we would like to see? Would we like to see a cover letter from each applicant? Would we like to see a resume? That would be my recommendation. But again, it is up to us to agree upon that. Is anyone opposed to that? Councilman Perry?
Yeah, I absolutely agree. I think that's a good idea. Of course.
Okay. As far as a deadline for that, again, my recommendation would be the 27th of June. That gives a week from today for anybody who is interested to submit their application to council. Go ahead.
Would you like everything to go to you and then you just umbrella it down? Or is it their duty to send it to each one of us?
Which is, I would love for everything, yeah. No, I do not want everything to go to me. No, I think it would be appropriate to run through Ann or Nick. I don't know what your guys' thoughts are on that.
I feel like Clerk or Council and Forrest would certainly be the best option for that.
I tried to give another option. Okay. Does anyone have any issues with the 27th being the deadline for that? Yes, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. If me, I'm not nitpicking. I have to ask Councilman Perry to explain, but in my mind, I didn't think we could act until July the 5th. There's no opening until July the 5th.
So I'll let you answer. Yes.
Help me out with that.
Yeah, the, there is the time period to take action, to vote or do the actual selection of the election process. But I think you have the advantage of knowing that this is happening so you can gather information. And I think that's what you're talking about doing, to give people notice in the community. And one thing you may want to consider is how do you give people notice that you are accepting almost self-nominations? You know, to use terminology of election, you're kind of self-nominating. You're not applying for a job as much as you're getting nominations so that you can consider those in the election process that you follow.
Councilman Gillig.
Would we then, you know, nominate a candidate and then take action on the candidate when that time comes or potential applicant or, I suppose, office holder? Would we then, you know, put forward, you know, I nominate so-and-so? Or would this be prepared as legislation that we would act upon?
Yeah. It's a question that I've pondered because as your ordinance, Section 12102, does endorse, adopts Robert's Rules of Order as your procedure unless there is a specified code section procedure that would apply. And I don't see that you have ever adopted anything like this procedure. So Robert's Rules of Order, in my study, it does suggest under elections that you would typically have all of the persons that are nominated or have their names expressed an interest unless it's probably so many that it may be difficult to have an election. You may have to establish some sort of nominating or screening process to get to a more acceptable number. But typically, you would have a vote where they would all be on kind of the ballot, if you will. And then you would vote and see how many votes each would receive. And Robert's Rule suggests that you do not ever remove anybody from the ballot because even somebody who may have the least number of votes may be a compromise candidate that people might look to. But I think that you have, Robert's Rule is rather flexible with this. And so I think that you can adopt a procedure, whether that's exactly like what I described or something else. That is kind of up to you as long as it's, of course, fair and transparent to everyone. Now, saying that, I did go back and look at how you went about, and I think the language in the charter was appointing to fill a vacancy, not of the mayor, but of council members. And the last time you did this has been over a decade ago, and you did it several times. That was all done by resolution. There was a resolution that was introduced by a council member for a one particular person. And then that resolution was voted up or down. Now, in all the cases that I recall, the resolution was approved. And there was some form of screening process that resulted in one person being named in a resolution that was adopted. That's another process that you could do, and you could vote that resolution down and have other resolutions up or down for individuals that you would consider.
Councilman Perkins.
I would think that it would be, I don't know, more transparent and almost easier if there was five candidates up here wanting to be mayor, that we would vote based upon name votes, you know, Smith, Smith, Jones, Jones, whatever. And then the highest performers would continue on, the lowest would drop out to eliminate until we have a majority of vote. That seems to be the easiest in a case like this. I don't know. Is that the?
Robert's Rules does talk about that, and even in a footnote, it does say that you could have the least vote-getters be dropped out by rule, by essentially a bylaw or the organization, which you could adopt. So you could do that. I do believe, I don't know fully, but I believe that the Republican Central Committee that has filled vacancies on city council by charter, they have followed a similar procedure.
Right.
And others could judge whether that was an effective way of reaching a result for a candidate, but I think it's a reasonable method to follow.
Yeah, it would seem reasonable because you would eventually get to a majority vote, I would think. So, okay.
Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. If we stick with Madam President's suggestion of 627, that gives us an extra eight days longer than I thought about. And to be transparent, I've thought about this election process, and I was going to suggest to city council, we first look at the department heads, see who's interested, interview them. If one of those shine, great. If not, go on a nationwide search. I really don't like the term nationwide. I'm not sure how far out in the nation people go when they're looking for candidates. And if we don't have a nationwide candidate, then come back into the community. So I was going to suggest that as department heads nationwide, back in the community.
So if I can respond to that, I think the issue with that is the way the charter reads is that it has to be, we have to allow for any Tiffin resident, voting Tiffin registered resident, to apply for the role.
Right.
We can't, we can't scale it back to who the applicant pool is. We can define the process, but we don't have the authority to scale it back to a specific group or number of people.
Good point.
Did you have something else? Yes, Councilman Leopard.
In what forms of media are we going to advertise this in?
So.
So newspaper for sure.
Newspaper, I believe also our website. Nick, correct?
City of Tiffin website.
Be on the city's website as well as all of our social media.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
When do you want to do the vote?
Yeah. So I guess my question to you guys is if we stuck with the deadline of 627 for applicants to submit their cover letters as well as resumes, you know, my thinking was that, you know, that would give us a week until, a little bit over a week until the next council meeting on July 5th. However, it's my understanding that we have a couple council members out that day for that meeting. So my question to you guys is, do we want to schedule a special meeting, maybe July 1st? That gives four or five days prior to leaving? Or when you two would return, are you both returning the week of the 11th?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But July 1st would work for me.
Okay. So I guess it's up to you guys. What are your thoughts on allowing essentially four or five days for us to review? for us to review the applicants and then discuss at the July 1st special meeting? Yes, Councilman Leppard?
I think that's, I think that's what we need. We need time to look at all of the applicants.
Okay.
Maybe do some research through Board of Elections to make sure that they are qualified voters, so forth.
So you're saying the 1st would be acceptable?
I'll do whatever anybody wants to do with their schedule. I'm flexible. But yeah, I think July 1st would be good.
Okay, then if we did July 1st for a special meeting, and obviously, again, we would then be discussing the applicants and I imagine inviting them then to that meeting to, you know, talk about why they want to be mayor. Would you guys like to do the vote that same meeting? Or would you like to schedule a meeting for when Councilman Perry and Councilwoman Yonatuna return on the week of the 11th?
Would you guys be here for the 1st?
I'll be here for the 1st.
Okay. I would think we would vote then.
Yes, I feel like...
Yeah, as strange as it sounds, we certainly don't want to rush this, but I certainly don't think we need any undue delay either.
Are we, though, able, now that I'm thinking about this, are we able to vote on the 1st if the vacancy does not occur until the 5th?
Yeah, you really should wait till during the 30-day time period.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we just do it at our second meeting in July?
My concern with that is, I mean, it's the 19th, or 18th, excuse me.
It'd be the 18th, yeah.
We're getting close.
Yeah, I mean, we're just, we're really bumping up against that timeline.
And I'm in Florida.
Fantastic.
So...
So he's in Florida.
Special meeting.
I don't want to go with that. It's hot. I'm large.
I'm large.
Could we do a special meeting on the 11th?
Yeah, what if we did a special meeting the 11th? Does anyone have any issues with that?
Yes, I'll be back.
I'm back.
Okay.
Yeah, let's...
And we would invite then the applicants to come at that time, speak to council about why they would like to be, you know, why they feel they're the best fit, and then we would take vote that evening.
No.
Yes.
Sorry. So at our July 1st meeting, we'll kind of review all the applicants that we get?
I don't think we're having that meeting.
I think we're not going to have that.
Yeah, my thinking is then we would not have that special meeting unless anybody sees that that's necessary still. Because, I mean, we would be, in my opinion, we would be having them come to the 11th meeting to talk about why they feel they're the best fit and take the vote that evening. But if people feel that, we should keep the July 1st meeting open to that.
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
So I would want, personally, I'd want just a little time between reviewing and telling... Would we publish all the applicants that we get beforehand, before that meeting? That way, the public has a chance to add input on any candidate.
I don't see why we couldn't.
Yeah, press releases from council clerk, I think would be very appropriate. I'm certain folks will, yeah, yeah. I'm doing some yard work, too. You want to come over and help me with that?
Do you have any thoughts on that?
I think that's acceptable. One thing I would advise is that, just like any matter before council, you should not violate the open meeting law and have the kind of discussions in small groups that would violate the law. Make sure that, you know, that you can do, as you do with any issue, you can do your own due diligence, investigation, and understanding of the candidates in addition to the information that you receive. But you cannot talk amongst yourself.
Councilman Leppard?
I would like a period of time between the interview process and the appointing process.
Electing.
Yeah, you know, I...
Sure.
So July 1st is out?
No, it doesn't have to be. If you would like to have perhaps the applicants come July 1st, discuss, you know, present to council, us be able to have a Q and A with them. And then perhaps on July 11th, we do another special meeting and do a vote at that time. And then maybe another opportunity for us to do any additional, you know, lingering questions.
We may want to invite several people on the 11th if, you know, if council feels comfortable with, you know, I want to talk to Ben further, I want to talk to Bobby further.
Yes.
Well, not only that, but if we do the 1st and then perhaps schedule the other meeting on the 11th, then we have time to hear from constituents as well. And they can, like, they can tell us, you know, who they believe is most qualified to lead the city.
Yeah, to answer your question or your comment, I guess, respond to that. I imagine that if any of the applicants who are serious enough would still attend the 11th meeting. And if they weren't here, I think that would be a really good indication as to not wanting to...
So we'll have two special meetings scheduled now on the 1st.
And the 11th, if everyone's okay with that.
That's good.
And time?
Oh, yeah. It's a good question.
I'm available 5:00 in the morning if you want to. Usually up, but what for?
For lack of a better term, it probably ought to be prime time for our meeting time.
Sometime after 5:30 or 6:00 because, you know, the applicant is working a day shift. I'm sure he didn't want to have time to go home and eat and clean up.
July 1st is a Friday, isn't it?
Yeah.
Is everybody okay with that on a Friday?
It's going to have to be.
Yeah.
Or 6:00, 6:30, 6:00, I think, would be reasonable.
Does anyone have an issue with 6:00 PM?
I'm good.
I think that should give most, any applicant, the ability to get here. Okay.
6:00 PM?
6:00 PM.
July 1st?
7:01, yep.
And 6:00 PM on the 11th?
Okay.
And just to understand, we will review and interview on the 1st? Okay.
Yes. And the 11th would be any additional questions, comments that we may have for the applicants? But the intention would be to vote that evening.
And one other, another suggestion, maybe if, you know, let's maybe send everything to the clerk. But if we could have Nick make the cover letters and resume available to us for pickup in your office? Would that be good?
Nick, do you have any issues with that or questions?
That would be, I'd be happy to do that. Also, I would be more than willing to write the press release with the nominations. The fan can send those to me. We would just get a cutoff date on the 27th as to when we are cutting off when we can submit those.
My recommendation...
4:30 PM?
Yeah, city hours.
Well, thank you for that, Nick. Appreciate that.
Okay, 4:30, okay. So if I can just summarize where we're at. The deadline for any applicants choosing to be considered for the election, the elected mayor role to fulfill the end of his term, the deadline for this would be June 27th by 4:30 PM to submit your cover letter as well as resume. Additionally, council, these will be submitted through Clerk of Council Ann Forrest. Additionally, council will schedule a special meeting on July 1st at 6 o'clock PM in council chambers to review and interview the applicants.
Friday.
Friday.
As a follow-up, on July 11th, we will also be scheduling a special meeting at 6 o'clock PM in council chambers to allow for any additional follow-up questions and comments for the applicants. The intention would be that council would vote that evening on the applicants that are presented and submitted. Have I missed anything? Councilman Perry?
Just a question, could we make another way that applicants can submit or drop it off at Nick's office? Because Ann's not here all the time, or...
They can email it.
Email it. So it has to be emailed for it to be...
Emailed or dropped off, I would say, to the Clerk of Council.
Okay, all right. And just for the public's sake, you mind giving your email address?
I believe, yeah, and I believe Nick will include this in the press release this evening, yeah.
That'd be perfect.
To ensure, yeah. More work for you.
More work.
Question.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Nick.
I'm sorry, I just want to clarify, people are allowed to submit paper resumes or will we only accept email?
Both. Any.
I do want to be clear, resume and cover letter. Yes.
And then that would go to my office or is that to go directly to Clerk of Council?
I think the intention is to go to the Clerk of Council, yeah, via email or to be dropped off in her office, if you're okay with that. I keep volunteering you for all this stuff.
Thank you.
Yep. Law Director, have I missed anything that we needed to cover?
No, I think that's a good process. You'll gather the information and there's meetings scheduled, so people can put that in their, on their schedules to appear.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Awesome. Does any, yes, Councilman Perkins?
Thank you. One last thing, do we want to decide now or later how we will proceed with a vote? What that voting process will be?
Councilman Leppard?
Thank you. I like the idea of dropping one during the voting process until we get...
Majority.
Majority.
Yeah.
So it'd be multiple votes until we get down to...
Possibly. Candidates, yeah, depending on how many candidates.
Yeah.
Anything else regarding this topic? Councilman Gilligan?
Well, I suppose in the interests of his law, Director of Law Howard said, you know, any awkwardness which come with a republic form of government, if anybody from council is interested in pursuing, if anybody would care to share that now, it might be a good idea to, I mean, I think we've already got a full news slate for tomorrow morning, but, you know, it would be something I would certainly be interested in as a fulfillment. But I am also more than willing to defer to the most qualified candidate. Just accepted a position with the Tiffin Seneca Public Library that I'm very excited for. But, you know, it'll be fun. We'll get to, you know, learn a lot about some of our friends and neighbors and, you know, get to hear some really cool characteristics from some very talented people to lead the city. And we all know we got pretty big shoes to fill and a big social media game to try to copy.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not in favor of Councilmember Gilligan's suggestion of a council member speaking up tonight. I would think the public would think that we're targeting a certain group of people. And when I mentioned a certain group of people, meaning department heads, that didn't fly very well. And I'm thinking the same thing, somebody's going to say, you're targeting a certain group. That is not my impression before the meeting.
Sure.
I think the, oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, go ahead.
Madam President, I think that Councilman Leppard's point and what City Administrator Thornton said, it might benefit us to have a list of, you know, good qualities for a leader presented to us, you know, possibly by HR or department heads, you know, just something very general. May be helpful for stability purposes, but...
Sure. Sorry, if I can just respond to that, City Administrator, is that something that perhaps anonymously that your group could maybe put together for us?
I suspect we could do that, but I don't know that we, that our qualities would be any different from the qualities that these very qualified council members will come up with on their own. You know, the integrity of the individuals, typical things you're going to hear. So while we, if requested to do that, could consider it. I think we'd prefer to allow the process to work as the charter describes it.
Unless there's any wild cards, like we demand a strict master.
Any department head who is an elector in the city is allowed to put in their own letter and a resume, just as you can put in your own letter and a resume. So it makes it fair to everyone
Yep.
that by 4:30 on the 27th, those applications that have been received from electors in the city can be considered.
Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Madam President. Is there a job description for the mayor that we could look at and maybe guide us?
Good question. It's a really good question. Yes.
Yeah, I would suggest that you look at the charter. The charter lays out some of the responsibilities for the mayor. You've observed a mayor and maybe other mayors over the years, but, so you can see what qualities might make a good mayor. But under 502, as the powers, so you can see what they're responsible for doing, exercising the supervision, control over all the administrative departments, and continues on. So I would suggest that you look at section 5.02 of the charter.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
I'll be glad to look at, thank you, Madam President, be glad to look at section 5.02. Could someone answer my question? Is there a job description for the mayor of the city of Tiffin?
Law Director?
I would say that's the charter, the voters have approved, that those are the authorities. I don't think that there is a job description.
Thank you.
Question, maybe specifically?
Councilman Leppard?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll direct my question to the law director. Between July 1st and July 11th, should we or should we not have contact with applicants?
Interesting.
One-on-one?
Yeah. You know, I don't know that there is a necessarily a direct one answer for that. You know, I consider this kind of like an election by voters and that the voters have an opportunity to talk to individual candidates if they choose. You have a responsibility like that, but you have a fiduciary duty, responsibility for making a decision. What I fear is that there will be anything that's kind of behind the scenes, that people will feel that the process is not as transparent as it should be, that they think that there's been some sort of deals happening. And I know that that's not the intent of anyone, to talk to candidates or investigate. But I think it'd be better, better practice for transparency if those kind of discussions were out in the open and at the public meeting. I think that's probably a better process and that's kind of my general advice. It will avoid some legal issues that might arise. One thing, too, since I have the floor, that I think that you've drawn some consensus of process. But I believe that at some point before you end your meeting, you should, by motion, adopt and review the timeline, the substance of what you're expecting the public, how they could respond if they're interested in the position, and the notice requirements, the election process that you talked about, just to make it clear for the public and that there is formal action taken by city council to kind of pull your discussion together. So it's not just a general consensus. Because this is a, you're defining the process that, in exercising your discretion, if you will, that the charter allows you to do. But you need to do that in some formal way, and I think that's by motion.
Sure. Councilman Perry?
Just a suggestion, since this decision is so huge, probably one of the biggest ones that we're going to face in our terms here. And if Mayor Motts would be willing, is there such a thing that we would want to do, like a debate, where Mayor Motts would moderate and the public could attend and listen to applicants? Or is that not a good idea? I'm just speaking out loud here.
I, that is not a good idea.
Thank you, Ms.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. I'll stand up.
Do I get a clap this evening, Ken?
Thank you.
Councilman Perkins?
Sorry, I won't.
You're fine.
I think something people forget is, number one, Brent has said over and over and over, this is an election. This is not an appointment, and this is an election by seven people that sit here, not a citywide election. And I know that everybody wants to... And I know that everybody wants to talk to everybody on their opinion and you want to weigh, you know, your neighbors and this and that. But as time sensitive as it is, you can't go walk, you know, 70 streets asking every single person what they thought about so-and-so on this night and this night and this night. And it's no different than, like you said, Republican Central Committee or Democratic Central Committee. And when they do appointments and they come in, you're going to speak your piece and you are going to normally campaign yourself to them. We're not going to seek those people. Those people are going to come to us. That's what a mayor does. They have enough leadership to go out and talk to each one of us and do their thing. So I think a lot of that process will take care of itself. That's what I would think at least. That's just my two cents though.
Councilman Gillig.
I feel like we can't place any restrictions on who can or cannot contact counsel. It might behoove us to, if we get into any serious discussions, encourage them to use email so that it's available via public records request. But probably, you know, telephone conversations are, you know, unless we're keeping records of discussions and things of that nature. But as Brent said, it's probably a good idea to discuss as much of this publicly as possible.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion on this, the one thing, Councilman Perry.
Last question more for the Law Director, just out of curiosity. For a council seat, it goes back to, you know, the respective political party to, you know, fill that seat. Why does it not work that way for mayor?
Change the charter. It's a charter provision.
I get it, but it seems like the same thing, you know.
We just changed it.
We just, you'd sent in, they changed it.
Yeah, otherwise I'm it.
Yep. Well, Ben would be mayor.
Yeah, and just to give you the history of the provision, the provision was that it used to be that it would be a member of council. You would select within a small group of seven. And that was changed based on the Charter Review Commission deliberations and recommendations to you. And then you approve that to submit to the voters. And if voters approved, having it, have cast a wider net so that anyone eligible thought that there may be qualified people in the community that might be better than council members. Not necessarily, but let's have a wide net cast to consider. So that's, it's a voter approved. That's what the voters wanted.
That's certainly more democratic.
Councilman, oh, my gosh, I'm sorry. I keep calling on him tonight because he has got all these questions. Councilman Leopard.
He asked so many questions.
I know, my God. It's more than you tonight, Ken.
Turning to Jones.
Yeah. Councilman Leopard.
I really do not want to see any Ds, Rs, or Is on the cover letter or on the resume.
No.
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter to me. I mean.
It's a good call out.
We, it's our duty to elect the most responsible person.
Absolutely. Thank you for calling that out. The one thing I want to add before somebody makes a motion regarding this process is, I hope it goes without saying, but I want to ensure that we are extremely prepared for the July 1st special meeting. So any applications and resumes and cover letters that we receive on the 27th, please ensure that we're extremely prepared to have any questions and those are all reviewed ahead of time. Again, I'm sure it goes without saying, but just want to ensure that we, you know, are efficient and make sure that, again, we're just overly prepared. It's just such a big decision. So with that said, yes, Councilwoman Yatou, I'm sorry.
Well, saying that, and we only, that gives us, what, four or five days to go through it. So when are the packets available for pickup? Next day? So that we can go through them before the first?
So, I mean, I don't want to speak for you, but I imagine if the deadline is 4:30 on Monday, I imagine by Tuesday morning, we would have that all sent to us via email from the Clerk of Counsel.
Okay, so we're not picking up here? I thought we were picking up at Nick's office.
Or even as they come in.
As they come in.
As they come in, it would be forwarded to us.
Okay, just checking.
Sure, sure. That's a good question. Is there any other discussion on this? Questions? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion for this process?
Nick has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nick.
I do have a question. Then when would you like to have the public made aware of those nominations, those candidates? Would it be, I would assume it would be after counsel is made aware of them. So if we're closing at 4:30, would that be then Tuesday that we're announcing that to the public?
I mean, I guess I would defer to you. Does that give you enough time to be able to submit that?
I could have enough time. I could have enough time to have it out Monday evening, but I want to make sure counsel sees it first.
Agreed, yeah.
Sometime Tuesday, yeah.
I would say by Tuesday morning, no later. Yeah, if we, as long as we, to your point, have it prior to, I think that that would be acceptable. So by Tuesday morning. Is that, is everybody in agreement with that? Is that okay?
Last question.
Yes.
And when we vote, would it be by voice vote or would it be by secret ballot or is the charter voice?
Roll call vote. It cannot be a secret ballot.
Okay. Ben, enough to the Republican one.
Yeah, right, yeah, strange. Any other discussion? Would someone like to make a motion to adopt this process as outlined? Councilman Perry.
I would so move that we adopt this process to find the next mayor of Tiffin.
Okay. Do you want me to go through it maybe? I think I'll go through it one more time and then maybe if you want to make your motion. So a cover letter and a resume to be submitted to the Clerk of Counsel Anne Forrest on June 27th, no later than 4:00 PM. Additionally, a special meeting will take place on July 1st at 6:00 PM in council chambers to interview and go through a question and answer process with these applicants. Following that meeting on July 11th, an additional special meeting will take place at 6:00 PM in the council chambers for any follow-up question and answer. The intention additionally for the July 11th meeting would be to vote on the applicants in that public forum. Is that the motion you would like to make?
Yes. And the election process then, also you had a discussion about how you would consider all of the candidates. And you would vote after dropping the least, the person who received the least number of votes. If you did not have a majority, a person receiving a majority votes. So you'd vote then again and after dropping the least, a person who received the least votes and continue to vote until someone receives a majority of council members voting.
Thank you.
I have a copy of that if you want me to read it.
Sure, go ahead. That'd be fine. I stumbled through it, so go right ahead.
This one is five candidates are vying for a position at the final determination and selection meeting. And if upon the first vote, no candidate receives a majority of votes, the candidate receiving the fewest number of votes shall be eliminated and the vote taken regarding the remaining candidates, such procedures shall continue until a candidate receives a majority of votes.
I think that fairly describes what I understand the discussion that you had.
Thank you. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Make a motion to amend Councilmember Perry's motion. I understood you to say by 4:00 PM on the 27th.
I'm sorry, it's by 4:30 PM.
I thought you said four. It's on record as four and I'd like to amend it to 4:30.
Thank you. Yes, 4:30 PM.
Thank you.
Yes.
Did anybody second?
No, no.
We'd love to though.
Did we include notice requirements in that? Motion?
Notice requirements, sorry. What do you mean? I'm sorry.
I think notice to the public about receiving interest, self-nominations for, with a cover letter and resume by the 27th at 4:30. Is that what you're referring to? And putting the notice in the newspaper?
Correct.
Okay, yep. So the notice to the public in addition to this meeting would be outlined within the newspaper in addition to the city council's website and all of our social media avenues. Did I miss anything, Nick?
If I may, if we could not make it a notice in the paper that would require us to put out a legal ad in the newspaper, which is not, I believe, what council is requiring here.
Do you have any issue with that? Does anyone have any, yes, Councilman Leopard?
I think it needs to be a notice, a legal notice.
It doesn't have to be a legal notice, but it could be a, but it could be a advertisement.
We would certainly notify them, but we can't require the newspaper to publish anything without paying for it to be published.
A public service announcement, in other words.
Right. But of all the things we publish, this may be a very important.
Needs to be published.
I agree. It will certainly be noticed to all media, but I can't require them to publish anything unless we were paid for them to publish.
Right.
Okay.
We can do that as a council.
Do we have any issues with that?
No.
Does anyone have any issues with the costs associated with that? I think is that maybe what you're saying now?
It's just one day.
Okay. Did you have something?
No, I was just going to say, Madam President, the earliest it would be in would be Wednesday. That's not a lot of notice.
How many days?
One.
I'd like to see more than one.
Paper comes out once a week, I don't know.
Zachary.
Or twice, sorry.
We're probably going to get coverage in the newspaper anyway.
You say that now.
Look at it.
Yes, Nick.
Which we very well might, in my background, I don't want to force the newspaper to do anything without us. We would have to pay for them to be in there.
Agreed.
So, so in my opinion, my recommendation, given the other channels that were advertising this and in addition to, did you say Wednesday? It would be posted then?
But the press release would get out sooner.
The press release would come out tonight, tomorrow. Do we have any issues with that? Do we feel like that covers enough as far as transparency to the public and notification to the public?
Yes.
Okay.
Whatever costs, the clerk's got a budget.
Okay. So I think maybe we should re-summarize this motion here.
Good luck with that.
Okay.
So a cover letter and resume will be submitted via email or dropped off physically to the Clerk of Counsel in her office by June 27th at 4:30 PM. The notice to the public will be submitted via the Tiffin City's website as well as social media avenues and in addition to the newspaper that will come through on Wednesday. We will host a special city council meeting on July 1st at 6:00 PM to interview and go through a question and answer process with any of these applicants. Additionally, we will have a second special council meeting on July 11th at 6:00 PM to go through any final question and answers, follow-ups that we have. The intention of the July 11th meeting would then be to go through the voting process. As we have described, as the least, the applicant with the least amount of votes through the first round of voting process would be eliminated until the, until an applicant has received the majority of votes. I don't know that I've described that properly, but is that a good high level?
Because you'll continue to take ballots and vote until you, someone receives a majority.
A majority vote via council. Okay, thank you. Is this, are you going to motion or do you, I can't amend this again.
I'm going to second Councilmember Perry's.
Thank you.
Motion.
There's a motion and a second based upon the process that I described to elect the mayor due to the vacancy. Is there any further discussion?
Thanks a lot.
I will ask the clerk to call the role on the vote, please, on the motion.
Councilmember Perkins.
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Gillig?
Yes.
Yatou?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
And Leopard?
Yes.
Motion carries. Motion passes with a vote of six to zero. Okay. Additionally, I would like to announce a public hearing to take place at our next formally scheduled council meeting on July 5th at 7:00 PM to discuss ordinance 22-48 following city council's roll call. Does anyone else have any other business for council? Yes, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Believe it or not, I have two more items.
I believe it.
Benefit myself and one to benefit city council. We go back to ordinance 2255. It's the ordinance amending the budget for Fire Rescue Division capital budget for the purchase of workout equipment. I know we had the first reading. We're going to have the second reading. We're going to have the third reading. I would like an explanation before I vote on the second reading, even though I, workout equipment, is this, this is not physical weightlifting gym equipment or what is? So I know before I vote, what is workout equipment?
Yes, Mayor.
It's fine, I needed to talk. I didn't get to talk there for a long time, so I started. Workout equipment, so we are required to provide them because we have fitness for duty exams or required to provide them equipment to help them with that. So they have a committee put together to purchase this new equipment. Over the years, it's just been kind of whatever people find. Sometimes, I don't want to say necessarily garage sales, but they find discount equipment, whatever, and it's kind of been hodgepodge. Now by them getting rid of this equipment at the department, they're able to purchase things that their actual committee says are things they need that work for it. So they're going to be purchasing things like treadmills, weightlifting equipment, agility equipment, those kind of things that will keep them in top physical shape so that they can perform their duties.
Thank you. Then item two for the good of council, city council, ordinance 2256, we had the first reading and it's $12,500 into the Fire Rescue Division for repairs to the 2005 Seagrave engine. We had the first reading. We're going to wait two weeks for the second, wait another two weeks for the third, wait another month after the mayor signs it. Is this repair?
We actually discussed this this morning with the fire chief and he said it was not urgent.
Thank you.
He's okay with going through the normal process. Sorry. I got to get used to this.
For 30 days.
Is there anything else for council? Okay, seeing none, we can adjourn. Thank you, everyone.
These are so long.
That should be your requirement, candidates on the first break.
I'm turning to Jones.
Bring us dinner.
You may need it, depending how long you're up here.